Good afternoon. I am Julie Rowan, the president of the League of Women Voters of Concord Carlisle. On behalf of our league, I would like to welcome you to this forum for candidates for the Concord Select Board. These candidates will appear on the ballot for the local Concord election on June 11th. Our moderator this afternoon is Elizabeth Foster-Nolan. She is a member-at-large and member of the Board of the League of Women Voters of Massachusetts. Since our founding in 1920, the League of Women Voters has worked to foster civic engagement and hence access to voting. The league is a nonpartisan organization and does not support or oppose any candidate or political party. I will now turn over the proceedings to Elizabeth Foster-Nolan, our moderator, who will run the forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, and welcome, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Dane. Thank you very much for joining us for this virtual candidate forum. We're living in a new reality, and we do appreciate you helping us to provide information to the voters in this unique way. I want to let you know that all of the questions here were chosen and written by the League of Women Voters of Concord Carlisle. They solicited questions from the members of the league as well as members of the community and the public. They received over 30 questions for this forum. We are not asking you 30 questions, but we want to let you know that they did take a lot of time to review and combine those questions and edit them to make sure that they were impartial and also to be concise and unbiased. So for those who are viewing this, you may have submitted a question. Your exact question may not be there. However, it has been taken into consideration in combining the questions that we will be asking this evening. And again, as a brief reminder, one minute for an opening statement, two minutes for each question, and two minutes for each of you for a closing statement. And we will start with opening statements, and we will have one minute, and we will start with Mr. Dane for an opening statement. And Mr. Dane, you're going to need to unmute yourself.
I have to say unmute. Okay, am I on?
You are on.
Okay. First, I want to congratulate the league on the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. And the anniversary in Massachusetts, the ratification in Massachusetts is on June 25th, and that's a big and important date. And I appreciate the contribution that the league has made toward the intelligent and nonpartisan consideration of political events and government and the operation of government. And I hope that the people who are listening in today will benefit from the conversation with me and Mr. Johnson. And so I look forward to answering the questions.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, you have one minute for your opening statement.
Sure. Thanks for this opportunity to share my views and plan for working in Concord as a member of the Select Board with the league and with the public. So I just wanted to start by just talking about my credentials here. First of all, I have significant town government experience, the relevant experience to be a Select Board member as the Chair of the Planning Board and a member of the ZBA before that. I'm also committed to the Bridge to 2030 Comprehensive Long Range Plan. I've been endorsed by both of the co-chairs of that plan in my campaign, and I've already worked to propose bylaws to implement the actions in that plan. I have very few potential conflicts of interest. I have a technology background that suits the current times and have a record of listening to concerns and finding middle ground to get things done.
Thank you. Our first question will be addressed to Mr. Johnson. What are the three town opportunities or issues you intend to address during your first year of office, and how would you address them? You have two minutes.
Sure. Okay, thank you. So I think one of the most pressing immediate concerns, of course, is the economic situation that is occurring as a consequence of the COVID crisis. So we will immediately have, it looks like, a 3% reduction in our budget guideline coming forward. So that is going to put pressure on all elements of the town's workings, and we need to have a good plan and response for that. The second is that we have some issues that have in the past held us up as a town for coming together. And the most prominent of those I see is the Estorbrook Road dispute for access to Estorbrook Woods. And I think that there still is, believe it or not, some opportunity to make progress there with some new blood on the board. And then, thirdly, I think that we need to move ahead with our plans that while there are some changes as a result of COVID-19, that really the fundamental issues that Concord has had are still there and that we need to continue to move forward to make Concord a more inclusive and sustainable place to live, to bolster our village centers, and to get town government transparency and effectiveness. So all of those things are achievable, and we just need to keep making progress on, you know, small hits in each of those areas.
Thank you. Mr. Dane, the same question. Do you need me to repeat it? You need to unmute.
Okay. I don't disagree as to what these issues are. I think what I do bring to those issues is a great, much greater depth of experience. And experience, for instance, on the economic issues for the town. I just met earlier this morning with the Economic Vitality Committee and the Town Manager on a video conference at which I presented a plan by which the town could assist the retail and restaurant businesses in town to reopen after the situation somewhat normalizes. Because I understand that the financial burdens that those businesses have suffered are going to be a real liability for the town. And the efforts that have been made to this point have really not successfully addressed that. So I think that the town can act under the provisions of the Civil Defense Act that have not yet been invoked. But that's, and I presented all the details on that. As far as the Estorbrook Woods, I'm probably one of the few people in town who have read every single page of everything that was presented to the court. I'm an attorney. I specialize in real estate law. I know a lot about that case, and I know, have a good idea about how to deal with it. First thing I would do is go down, put on my tie and go downtown and talk to the town's attorneys, find out really what they think about the case. Second step would be, if I'm not satisfied with that, would be to ask the town to hire independent counsel to review the case and look at what our options and prospects are. And finally, the defendants in that case have repeatedly expressed the desire to talk directly to the town about resolving the case, and yet that has never, has never taken place.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dane. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Dane first. Are there steps which you would advocate to make housing more affordable for Concord's aging population who want to remain in Concord? What are they?
Well, I was counsel to the Concord Housing Authority for 10 years, and I helped the town build, built most of the affordable housing that exists today. The, when we did that, the land was donated by the town and the funds came from the state. That's no longer the case. I think in order to make housing more affordable, the big issue is not raising money to build new housing. It is making the existing housing more affordable. And I would propose that we adopt a residential tax exemption, as 14 other towns have, which would mean that the, say, something like $500,000 of the value of each house is not subject to real estate taxes. That would instantly make a good portion of the housing in Concord more affordable. We cannot build our way out of 40B. It just won't work because the more housing you build, the more 40B housing you need. We do not need 53 units of assisted housing, assisted living at the Boston Gas Concord Junction plan. And the only reason we're building it is because we want to fill a quota. That's how we got the muse. And I don't think those are the ways that we can solve the housing problem. The town has to give builders and developers the incentive to do, to provide the housing that we need rather than the housing that is responsive to the demands of Chapter 40B. So that's, I think that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, same question.
Yes, so this year as Chair of the Planning Board, a key initiative that I've led is to increase housing choice in Concord. So following from the recommendations of the Comprehensive Long Range Plan that where residents would like to be able to age in place rather than move to, you know, assisted living centers or the Cape or anywhere else and stay in Concord, we're trying to make options available for them that do not require public subsidies. So for example, to make it simpler, to create an accessory dwelling unit within your house or to make a small addition that would support an accessory dwelling where a aging owner could either move into the accessory dwelling or keep their main dwelling and then rent the other unit. And so that gives them a more appropriately scaled unit, lower costs, and perhaps the ability to gain some income. But we have also supported other options such as two-family housing and residency. And then the continued support for the raising of money for those that need it for affordable housing. And so all of those initiatives, I think, are going to help, but we still do have a significant issue with the high costs of living in Concord. And so there are also existing programs for providing tax relief to those that have the limited means and can't really afford to stay in their homes at the current tax rates.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with Mr. Johnson. If you are elected, what will be your plan for dealing with the ongoing litigation over access to Estorbrook Woods?
So when I became a candidate, I realized that I had kind of a narrow window of opportunity as a citizen to learn as much as I could about the Estorbrook Road dispute before I suddenly was thrust into the role of being a litigant. So what I did in March was I reached out to the Rast-Musons, and I actually walked with them for a couple hours in Estorbrook Woods and then met with Brooks Reed and Susanna Kay at the end of the road and spoke with them for about 20 minutes, and then subsequently met with Neil Rast-Muson another time and also exchanged lots of emails and actually collected a lot of the legal documents. And so what I learned there, of course, is that we have a very technical legal case on our hands. There are very good points made by the defendants, and that, but that if this was an open and shut case, it would have closed a long time ago. What I see is that there is a significant public interest in access to Estorbrook Woods. I believe that we should be able to find a way to achieve that. But it also, I have tremendous sympathy for the landholders who have had to, you know, suffer through vandalism and vitriol and littering and out-of-control dogs, and none of this is acceptable. So we really need an approach that can take some of the pressure off of this entrance that can also ensure that property is respected and that people can live in peace, but that also ensures that the public can get access to this treasure in Concord that is really something quite unique.
Thank you. Mr. Dane. Mr. Dane, you're still on mute.
Sorry, I'm not very good at this.
That's okay. New for all of us.
I started to talk about this. The town has spent a great deal of money and accomplished absolutely nothing, as have the landowners. And there is no, there is no good outcome to the litigation because even if we win, there will be appeals. And if you win, it still will not solve the parking issues on Estorbrook Road. It will not really solve access problems. What you will do is you will have, if we succeed in the lawsuit, which I think is questionable, we will have merely alienated the owners of a lot of good, very large portion of open land that we will, we are relying on those people to keep open and undeveloped. And so there has to be a negotiated solution because it doesn't make any sense to spend a lot of money on either losing a lawsuit or on winning one that will do you no good. I see that on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen's meeting that has just been noticed for the end of the week, appointment of town council is one of the issues. And I see that on the docket for the case that the town has asked the court to restrain the landowners from blocking access, and the court just refused to grant that, to grant that request. We have to sit down and talk with these people, and we need to make a deal that works for everybody.
Thank you. Next question, Mr. Dane, you will start first. How would you approach current spending plans and fiscal planning given the unknown impact of COVID-19 on the town's fiscal condition and on Concord taxpayers' ability to pay taxes? How would you assess and prioritize planned major expenditures, such as the planned development of Giro Park and White Pond?
Well, I think we do have to prioritize our long-range capital projects to address our needs because raising taxes has, if that's how we're going to pay for things, has an adverse effect on the cost of living in this town. And if we're trying to promote affordable housing for people, and especially affordable housing for people who live here already, who are constituents, you can't spend money on things that will just increase their cost of living in this town and force people who live here to move out because they can't afford it so that we can build new housing for people that will be affordable for different people. We're facing large capital projects with the middle school project, and the committee on that is still grappling with the budget. And now they're talking about reducing some of the amenities in order to bring the cost of that school within the original projections. Things may have to be moved out to the future and spread forward in order to make the tax burden bearable for the, for the people that we want to keep in town. My children can't afford to live here. The people who work here in the town can't afford to live here. And so that, that does not build a strong community when your schoolteachers and your town manager and your police chief can't afford to live in the town that they are serving. But, you know, we won't solve that problem immediately, but we certainly don't want to push it in the wrong direction.
Thank you, Mr. Dane. Mr. Johnson?
So as I've mentioned in the earlier statement, we have about a 3% decline projected in our guideline from the original guideline spend for this fiscal year coming up. So we do need to make some changes, and we do have some challenges to do that because certainly there are many fixed budget line items. Of course, the negotiated, you know, pay for our union staff. We also have already existed payments against borrowing. And then when we look at trying to defer new capital projects, of course, because those are covered with borrowings, their immediate budget impact is actually quite limited. So it's not like suddenly they're going to magically take the numbers down a lot. So we're going to have to tighten our belts in a lot of different areas. But I think we can also say that Concord is fortunate in that, for example, our tax collections through the beginning of May were only down like half of a percent. So, you know, we do, are in an enviable position relative to some towns in that we do have a more stable base. I think we do have to be very careful and watch the business side of this and not just from a tax perspective, but from a business viability perspective and support our businesses to the extent we can and help them move into the digital era. So I think that we should keep moving with certain capital projects, such as those that keep infrastructure improvements for our village centers, like, for example, the footbridge to the Baker Ave area that might be funded in part by the state and that would bring more workers into the town and to continue to meet our affordable housing commitments of funding. But I think there are many other areas where we could save money.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The next question, Mr. Johnson will start first. What approach will you advocate the Select Board take to ensure an open public process for town government and board and committee meetings while protecting public health during the COVID-19 crisis?
So I actually have already tried to advocate for this. So when there was the initial decision to, you know, go virtual, let's say, I actually developed some open meeting law compliant training for holding virtual meetings and submitted that to our Select Board Chair as well as the head of communications for the town. They decided not to pursue that. I've used Zoom every day for three, four years. And the, but they, I also have worked as a chair to try to conduct meetings and to ask for public comment. So for example, most recently, I challenged the reading of our own Director of Planning who had said that we should not have public comment following the policy. I appealed that through to our Select Board Chair and indeed was able to add public comment to our most recent meeting. I do, would like to say that as a Select Board member, I will advocate for greater availability of documents, try to avoid executive sessions whenever possible, the timely publication of minutes. I think that there have been some lapses in past years with the conduct of our business as a transparent government and that we can do better. And so also try to take advantage of technology, document management, to share more things with the public, correspondence, and also working draft documents so that the public is well-informed and timely informed.
Thank you. Mr. Dane?
I think the availability of documents is a real issue. For instance, we read in the town, the 2019 town report, which just became available online, that a portion of the Estorbrook Woods case was settled with the, with the Nielsen's on Estorbrook Road. There was never any mention of that, and the documents relating to that settlement are not available. So we don't know what the terms are. The, the meeting documents for most of the Select Board meetings are not available before the meeting and sometimes for quite a while afterwards. There were no minutes for the Select Board meetings available or approved going all the way back to February until just, I think, a few days ago when the Select Board voted to approve those minutes. When I tried to find out exactly what the Select Board had voted when they adopted the emergency resolution with regard to the real estate taxes, those minutes were not available and there was not even a copy of the, of the motion that was voted by the Select Board was not available. So I think that documents need to be much more available. There are very few of them that really need to be confidential. And I think that the way, the way that the Select Board meetings have been run virtually has not really worked very well because there's no discussion or debate on any issue. It's too controlled. It's more like this, this forum that we're running is people speak one at a time, they read the motions, and then everyone votes. I wouldn't say it's pre-arranged, but there is no, no real debate or discussion that takes place. That may mean that everyone agrees on everything. That's very unlikely.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Dane. Mr. Dane, you will start with the next question. How will you go about evaluating the performance of the town manager, and what criteria will you use?
Okay, well, I read someplace, and I didn't remember where, that the town manager had asked for an early, an early review and that I saw something about a fairly elaborate evaluation document or, I think they call it a tool, which seemed to me, when I saw it, really was not appropriate for a situation that, this town. I think one of the most important things for us to do, especially since we have a new town manager, is to solicit anonymous comments and evaluations from committee chairs, from town department heads, and other people who have had to deal with the town manager. And I say anonymous because, you know, the town manager has a lot of effect on the livelihood of, on the appointment of many of these people. And so I think the Select Board, which is their most important function, by the way, is the appointment and the evaluation of its chief executive, the town manager, is to get, is to get unbiased and unvarnished commentary from the people who work with and work for the town manager. I think that's a very important thing, and a formal evaluation tool is probably not the way to go.
Elizabeth, I think maybe now you're the one on mute.
I am. Sorry, no, that was me, Mr. Johnson. I apologize. You're next.
Okay, so, you know, I, in my work, in my professional work, we, of course, have had regular annual performance reviews throughout the organization for years. And the styles of these reviews ebb and flow. We have had reviews historically that were quite elaborate. Then we actually found that, you know, employees were very demotivated by this whole process and so abandoned those, but more recently have moved back to kind of a more of an informal but more rapid process, so quarterly check-ins, if you will, and then a somewhat more formal review. But the thing that has stuck is what you call sort of a 360-degree process. So where you actually look at direct reports, colleagues, where you actually look at direct reports, colleagues, of course, in our case, in the town, board members and committee members, and be able to collect kind of a total view, including the public, of what the town manager's performance is and not let it wait until a once a year process completes. So, I mean, in this case, I think we've had a lot of early impressions. Clearly, the COVID crisis has given us an opportunity to see crisis management. But we've also had significant personnel action that's taken place before that. And we've also seen in Article Six and the town warrant, a proposal to kind of change the balance of power in the government. All of these things, I think, deserve some feedback and perhaps some change. So I, I think, you know, I would be happy to have kind of an early check-in, but not a formal one.
Thank you. The next question, we will start with Mr. Johnson. If elected, what would you do to support Concord's four sustainability principles to make Concord a more sustainable community?
Well, so the first and most important way that we can reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the town is to leverage our municipal light plant. So, you know, we're fortunate to have this municipal light plant with its own control over sourcing of its power. And so it can move to renewable sources. In fact, has already begun that process and has been responsible for a lot of the progress that we've been able to make in our goals started by Article 51 a few years ago. But we need to continue that. And it's going to get a little harder because, you know, to source a larger percentage of the electricity from green sources, the, the price differential will be there. But then the other things that we can do are to have incentive programs to increase the use of electric vehicles, to consider alternative fuel vehicles in our own procurement for town government. And then for new infrastructure projects to avoid fossil fuels. So for heating especially. So in fact, there's Article 40 that's been proposed for the town warrant in 2019. I've worked with the proponents of that article to actually remove renovations from the scope because that was a complex and fraught process. But to actually, you know, encourage that new development should be fossil fuel free. We still have a couple of things to work out, trying to avoid the litigation exposure, as well as to get the payment for the process. But I think that we're lucky in the fall, we'll have visibility to what Brookline's response from the Attorney General is. And so we should be able to have a clear path on Article 40.
Thank you. Mr. Dane? You'll need to unmute. Ms. Mr. Dane, I don't think you're not unmuted? We can't hear you.
Okay, there. How am I now? Can you hear me? I just, hello? There. Now am I unmuted?
You're audible.
Yes.
I'm audible. Okay. You have to understand that green electric energy is really not in itself green. It just means that we are buying carbon credits. And that it just means that somebody else is not creating carbon, or at least persuades us that they're not creating carbon someplace else in the, in the universe. The only real, you know, non-carbon energy is either the hydro, which we can't get from Canada, or our own solar power or wind power. It's, it's, it's a worthwhile enterprise, but I mean, we have to really face what, what the facts are. And if it does mean increasing the cost of energy, that again, makes it more expensive to live and to do business here. Already, I think the cost of electricity is a disincentive to many of the businesses in this town. We've provided facilities for hybrid and electric cars, which is a, which is a fine thing to do if people choose to drive those vehicles. The Article 40, which sounds like it's a, an interesting idea, has, has been in the city solicitor for, for Cambridge, has written a long legal opinion on how it's unenforceable and illegal. And also, I think it was the town council for Brookline or another town of that kind that also was Foley and Hoag who wrote that opinion, that again, said that that because of various public utility bills and other issues, that, that was an unenforceable way of, of, of creating a energy conservation. And I actually gave copies of those opinions to the Chair of the Board of Selectmen a few months ago. And the, the town is aware of that issue.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Dane. The next question, Mr. Dane, you'll start first. Do you support the tax increment finance agreement for the Junction Village Affordable Assisted Living Project proposed in Article 16 of the town warrant and why?
I do not, for the same reasons that the Finance Committee is skeptical about it. And again, that's an issue where we are being reactive to 40B rather than building several units of affordable family housing, which is what's needed in this town, which we don't want to do because we don't want to pay for schoolchildren in our public schools. We're building, we're building 53 units of assisted living facilities that are, that are not needed because they will fulfill, help us fulfill the 40B requirement. And the Finance Committee thought that it really was not to the town's benefit to, to, at least that was the discussion, that it was not to the town's benefit to do this. I'd much rather see that space used for family housing. And it's not like there is no cost for, for, for assisted living. If we have 53 more units of assisted living in West Concord, we are probably going to have to buy another ambulance in large of the West Concord Firehouse and so on, which is now already overtaxed. And the ambulance runs to assisted living and nursing homes are multiple times a day. And so it is not without, just avoid, building housing that does not create schoolchildren is not without cost to the town.
Thank you, Mr. Dane. Mr. Johnson?
So I first mentioned that this is one of the few issues that as a Select Board member, I'd have to recuse myself because I'm a near butter to the site. As I look out my window, I can, if I look close enough, I can see the Junction Village site. But that said, I should also say that there's another case in which waiting for town meeting until the fall will give us far more context than we would have otherwise had. Because this summer is the decision that the state will make for the funding of projects. And then what, or is that the private funding for this project, which is provided by the low-income housing tax credit financing, that market is currently in turmoil, you know, with the bond markets being turned upside down by COVID-19. So I think that in the fall, we will have more context, be able to review whether that makes sense. But we also need to be aware that if that project does not go forward, we could have a hostile 40B project on our hands. And it would not be cited in a place that we would necessarily want a project to go. And it might not be scaled the way that Concord would like a project to be. And we can see projects like that in Sudbury, in Weston, that are actually because towns fell below their 10%. And we will fall below our 10% if we do not have a Plan B for how to achieve our affordable housing if Junction Village does not go through. So we don't have much time. Census numbers would be published probably in April 2021. So between now and then, we could do perhaps a housing production plan update. We could perhaps work to get some safe harbor under some of the circumstances. But we do need to press forward to avoid a bad outcome.
So, thank you. Now you both can take a deep breath. We're moving on to our last question. And we will start with Mr. Johnson first. What approach would you take to resolve location of cell phone towers and the gaps in cell phone coverage in Concord?
So I think we have a technology shift going on in the telecommunications world. So, you know, future towers are going to use 5G technology. So this new technology really has kind of two modes of deployment. One is with very small scale towers that are placed along the public way. And then others are a longer distance that uses a more conventional type of a tower. So I think within Concord, we have, of course, a very sensitive streetscape in the historic districts. It doesn't make sense to cite towers right on the street, on street lamps and so forth. And yet, we do also have a serious communications problem in town. There are heavy duty gaps in coverage. And so we need better communications to stick with the future of Concord. And I understand that there are health concerns. But these health concerns, first of all, you know, are not within our jurisdiction. And I would like to see better leadership at a national level, for example, but we need to work on a town level with the scope that we have as a town government. And so we can control citing through our overlay bylaw for cell towers. I mean, we have done some work there to improve the locations that are available. But I think that we also want to be careful in the deployment of 5G so that we don't end up with antennas everywhere. And I believe you're on mute.
Mr. Dane?
Yes, how do I?
We can hear you.
You can. Okay, good.
Yes.
Well, you know, many places in the third world have better cell phone service than, than we have in the center of Concord. And when we installed the new parking meters that were supposed to be, operate like with credit cards over the, over the internet by, by cell signal, half of them didn't work. The process has, has become so bogged down that we, we cannot build a cell tower that would, that, that meets our requirements. The proposed locations that were in play were on the Police Department, which did not have the space to put it, on Public Works Building, which had some other objections, and in the cupola of the Emerson School, all of which would have worked from a technical point of view. But each had, you know, constituencies that opposed it. And the constituencies opposing cell towers is a very vocal constituency. But people in a community like this, where people are, you know, what people do and how people work in this community, cell service is avail, is, is, is essential. And we have to find a way to solve this problem. I agree that 5G coming along has an effect on the capital, capital expense that the carriers are willing to put into it. But as far as the health issues go, there are six, are six or eight cell towers on the roof of Emerson Hospital, which I know are there because I did the leases for them for Emerson Hospital. And if there were a serious health issue about the transmission from cell towers, the hospital would not have put them there. And you probably have more exposure to those, the, the electronics by carrying around your cell tower, your cell phone in your pocket.
Thank you.
The tower. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dane. We are now going to move on to the closing statements. As a reminder, each of you will have up to two minutes for your closing statement. And we are going to start the closing statements with Mr. Dane.
Thank you. I have been a resident of Concord for over 50 years. I've been practicing law here. I was, worked with many, on many town projects. I did many projects for the Concord Rotary Club, including the Med Flight Facility at the Emerson Hospital, the Veterans Memorial, the Ride Out Playground Fieldhouse, and many other projects for the town, many of which were over the opposition of, of various town officials that we had to deal with in order to, in order to do these. I was the attorney for the Concord Public School System for 10 years and for the Housing Authority for over 10 years. And I developed the strategy and the financial model for building the BD Center as a member of the Board of Directors. I am very familiar with many of the technical and legal requirements of municipal government and government in general. I've worked with the legislature for many, many, many years and know how that works. And I deal every single day of my life dealing with problems that involve difficulty, conflict, and disagreement, and specialize in bringing people to agreement on issues that are difficult to solve. Because that's the only way to go forward, is that you need to resolve issues by being flexible and to be responsive. And that's what I hope to do for, for the board and to bring a sense of reality and contact with the real world to their proceedings.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dane. Mr. Johnson?
So as Chair of the Planning Board, I have drafted, negotiated, presented, and passed multiple warrant articles at town meeting. I've hosted public forums where we've had 200-plus attendees, had to handle public comment, open meeting law complaints, all kinds of attributes of our daily business as citizen governors, if you will, for the town of Concord. This is the relevant experience, if you will, for being a Select Board member. Certainly, the history of Concord shows that many Select Board members were former to their appointment or, or election, the Chair of the Planning Board. So what would I do when I was there? I would be focused on the platform, as you can see at selectmat.org, which is to make Concord more inclusive by promoting hard housing choice and tax fairness, more sustainable by reducing our greenhouse gas emissions to avoid the next crisis, more vibrant by combining infrastructure, cultural, and business support to make our village centers as strong as they can be, more efficient with a more fiscal responsible, as well as transparent government, and more connected by promoting transit alternatives that are available to all and can get us beyond the traffic, which is not right now a problem, but will probably soon be again. So we can look ahead and we can build on Concord's strengths. And we can, you know, focus on the next challenges that we're going to have. For example, the 250th anniversary of the fight, fight at Old North Bridge. So please vote early and see the applications on my website.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. I would like to close out this forum by first of all thanking Mr. Johnson and Mr. Dane for joining us and participating in this virtual forum. We really do appreciate your support for doing this on a virtual basis. First time in Concord, Carlisle, that the league has done this, and many leagues across the, the United States also are in this position. But thank you. For those who are watching, the election in town is June 11. You must be registered to vote by June 1, 8:00 p.m. We encourage everyone to vote early by mail. You can request an early voting ballot by submitting a request by email, fax, or regular mail. by email, fax, or regular mail to the town clerk. You can go to the town website to learn more about how to vote by mail. Additionally, they have determined that there will be one polling place for all five precincts, and that will be at the Concord-Carlyle High School, 500 Walden Street in Concord. The hours for the polling location are 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So I want to thank the League of Women Voters of Concord-Carlyle for holding this forum and promoting an understanding of democracy and an understanding of what the candidates stand for. I would like to thank Judy Zumbrocker, Julie Rohan, and Peggy Worgland for helping with this, with timing, with the tech support, and all around getting this together. And again, please try to get your early voting out there. If you do decide to go to the polls and someone else wants to, I suggest bring a neighbor, bring a friend. And as I like to round out all of my moderated forums that I do, remember, a democracy is not a spectator sport. And everyone being here today shows that. So again, thank you and good luck to all the candidates.